Your panel, we're on.
Good afternoon and welcome to our Committee the Whole meeting. On June 23rd, 2025, we acknowledge that the sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been the site of human activity for over 10,000 years in its rich and indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Nation Abbe Nation. We're grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We're also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We're mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with our relations. Together, we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. We'll call the meeting to order at 5:02 PM. We're going to amend the agenda to move 10.4 up to 10.1. Any other modifications to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve by councillor Miller, second by councillor Robinson, that the June 23rd, 2025 Committee the Whole Meeting agenda be approved and circulated, as amended, and that is carried. Any disclosure, pecuniary, or conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we'll look for an approval of the minutes from June 9th. Move by councillor Brennan, seconded by councillor Miller, that the minutes of the June 9th, 2025, and June 16th, 2025 Committee the Whole Meetings be approved and circulated. All in favor? That's carried. So now we'll go to 6.1, our delegation with Arun Sharma for the Asset Management Plan presentation.
Great, thank you. And thank you for having me today. My name is Arun Sharma and I am an asset management advisor here at PSD Citywide and I'm excited to share with you the 2025 Asset Management Plan. So I've prepared a little bit of a slide deck and well, I'm excited to go through the project, the process, and what exactly the asset management plan means for Smith's Falls in the foreseeable future. That being said, before we begin, I do want to acknowledge the really great work that a lot of the town staff have put in over the last eight months for this project. Asset management, it's fluid and it continues to evolve day in and day out. So even though we've got this fantastic document ready to go, asset management is an ongoing theme, which we will discuss now. So if you don't mind, please go into the next slide. Alright, so a little bit of an agenda today. So I'm very briefly going to go over what asset management is in the municipal context, tying that to Ontario Regulation 58817. After all, it is the primary reason why this project took place. Following that, I will go briefly into the project overview, what some of the requirements are, or sorry, what they were, the timeline and our general process, just so everyone can get an understanding of what exactly this, how we came and drafted this asset management plan. We'll then pivot and get into the specifics of Smith's Falls 2025 Asset Management Plan, what some of the findings were, how we went about selecting our sustainable proposed levels of service for the next 10 years. And then we'll also take a look at the current financial picture of the town. Lastly, we'll then conclude with some takeaways and some immediate action items, at which point we'll then move on to the Q and A portion. Next slide, please. And feel free to go to the next one as well. So in terms of asset management, what that means, ultimately, when we're talking about asset management, we're talking about service management. So intuitively, we all know that whether it's roads or bridges providing transportation services or buildings and equipment providing, you know, service delivery, we know intuitively that the asset essentially is a conduit for the service that we provide. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about what asset management involves, ISO 55000 has a fantastic definition of what exactly that means. So ISO 55000 is the International Organization of Standardization. So when we're talking about the levels of service being provided, we're taking a three-pronged approach to our assets, to everything the town owns and manages. So we, of course, know that there is a cost attributed to owning and managing assets. So those are our replacement costs of our roads, our bridges, our underground infrastructure. We know that they perform at a certain level. From a layman's perspective, a road is good and bad. It's got potholes. It doesn't have potholes. We've, of course, taken a more technical look at this as well, but we know that there's the cost attributed to it, the performance as well. And then lastly, that third piece, and just as important is the risk. Of course, we know inherently with the owning assets and managing assets, we are responsible for the risk as well. So whether that is legislative, or a health and safety, or a financial risk, we know that these three things play a part and ultimately guide us in selecting our levels of service. You can go ahead and skip two slides, please. So in terms of the Ontario Regulation 58817, what you're looking at right now is a timeline from 2019 up until 2025. So I'm pleased to announce and report that with the completion of this asset management plan, the town is 100% compliant with all of those deadlines in 2019, 2022, 2024, and 2025. So essentially, when you're taking a look at that asset management plan, what we're looking at, or what you're looking at, sorry, is you can see that the asset inventory has been completed. We have our current level of service being provided. We have our proposed levels of service for the next 10 years. There's, of course, also a financial strategy attached to the asset management plan, which was not included in last year's iteration of the plan. Next slide, please. And again, please. Yep. So in terms of the project overview and what our requirements were, first and foremost, and tying back to Oreg, essentially, our primary objective was to create a 2025 Asset Management Plan in compliance with Oreg 58817. And there's a lot of fine print in the Ontario Regulation, but what it boils down to is, what are our proposed levels of service for the next 10 years and how are we going to afford that? Our secondary objective, and just as important, honestly, as the first one, is the further consolidation and refinement of municipal asset data. Because, of course, the reports and the infographics that you see within the asset management plan, it's only as good and only as accurate as the data that feeds into it. So our secondary objective was to continue to improve our data, and we will be talking about that in the next few slides. Next slide, please. In regards to the timeline for this project, we've spent over the last, we've spent the last eight months building out this 2025 Asset Management Plan, which began in Q4 of last year in October, and with the culmination and the draft and this council presentation today in June. From October to March, we were engaged with staff, very engaged with staff in terms of updating and refining our asset data, whether this is, what condition our assets are in, the replacement costs, when have assets been assessed, when are things scheduled to be replaced? These are all things that we've been going through and refining over the past, from October to March, essentially, to get us as accurate of a report as possible. That being said as well, we've also done some public engagement. So in November to March of 2025, there was some public engagement done. And ultimately, the purpose of that was to understand what the public sentiment is around the current levels of service. Where would our tax and rate payers like to see us invest more? Are they content with the level of service being provided? So there was some fantastic insight in that public engagement as well, which ultimately helped understand what our proposed levels of service should be. It also helped us understand what exactly is it that the public values. Following our data refinement and also following the public engagement piece, in April, we then had quite a few staff workshops. And this was done in April. And really, what we wanted to do here is really just pick the brains of all the subject matter experts, understand what our levels of service are, where are there rooms for improvement, are our current lifecycle management strategies appropriate, so on and so forth. And then with the draft process over the last two months, we've really put the pedal to the metal to get this draft completed in May and June. Next slide, please. So again, to just recap, in terms of the process, what we did initially was just, we spent quite a bit of time just improving that centralized asset register. Where all the, basically, the way you can look at it is that this is where all the data is housed. So we did a lot of data gap analysis, refining our data, doing internal assessments, understanding what some of our future priorities are in terms of our facilities or machinery and equipment, so on and so forth. And again, with the public engagement, again, what we were trying to do is to understand public sentiment around levels of service that are currently being provided. Next slide. And just to recap then with the staff workshops and kind of just to reiterate that, what we were really trying to do was leverage the fantastic subject matter expertise at the town and really just understand how assets are managed from an operations and maintenance perspective, how are assets rehabilitated, what goes into that process, how are assets replaced as well? Because essentially, what we wanted to do is have some working sessions to understand, well, what exactly are our current levels of service metric? What are the current condition of our roads? What is, and how are we deriving those condition scores? And then, once we had those fantastic workshops, what we did was, by understanding the financial picture and understanding how the town has historically spent money towards its assets, we then selected proposed KPIs for the next 10 years, which are achievable, attainable, realistic, and make sense for the town. Next slide, please. Pardon me, I'm just, I think I came down with a little bit of bugs. So if you see me taking a sip of water, please pardon me. Alright, so now, what you're looking at here is the total replacement cost of the entire asset portfolio. It's about $372 million in total, and there really isn't all too much that stands out here apart from the fact that Or Smith's Falls has a full asset portfolio. And typically, what we'll see with a full asset portfolio is our, what we call core infrastructure takes up the bulk of it. So when we're talking about our core infrastructure, what we're talking about is our roads, our bridges and structural culverts, and then our water, sanitary, and storm network. So these are typically, these are our core asset categories. And when you're taking a look at that asset management plan, you will see that for these core asset categories, there are mandated by the province, current levels of service, which we have to report on. So you will see those updated metrics in there. But for all the non-core asset categories, we did not have to do that. So really, it was up to us in terms of selecting what our metrics are going to be and then building the rationale behind why we've selected those metrics. Now, before we move on to the next slide, there's two things that I do want to note here. The first one being is, I do want to key in on the importance of replacement cost methodology. So as you can see, the $372 million for the entire asset portfolio. That being said, it's extremely critical that the replacement costs of our assets are monitored, updated on an annual or semi-annual basis to ensure that our database is up to date. Because ultimately, our asset management plan is a snapshot in time. So just because these are our replacement costs in 2025, in a few months or next year, I'm aware that there's going to be some assessments done. So these can change quite dramatically. So the importance of replacement cost methodology and just updating this information, it can't be overstated, that's for sure. Next slide, please. Okay. Excuse me. Alright, so what you're looking at here is the general overall condition of all of the assets owned by Smith's Falls. As you can see, the majority of the assets owned by Smith's Falls are in fair or better condition. More specifically, we've got 68% of all assets, so that's all roads, bridges, machinery, equipment, so literally everything that's owned, is in fair or better condition, and that is essentially our baseline. And this is a good news story because what it means is that assets are typically managed proactively as opposed to, you know, replacing them when they, when they break down or no longer in use or disrupt our levels of service. So the fact that assets are in, 68% of all assets are in fair or better condition, this is a positive news story. Next slide, please. Okay, taking a bit more of a granular look here, there's a few things that, when I, when we were putting this together, there's a few things in here that jumped out at us. What I do want to draw everyone's attention to is, you can see that for our sanitary sewer network, for example, that quite a few assets are unfortunately in poor or very poor condition. It's at the bottom there. And the reason for that is essentially because we, not all assets have been assessed, and even those that have been assessed, we're not generally or typically relying on third-party assessments. We're relying on just more so internal assessments. So one of the recommendations we've got in the asset management plan is to begin to shift away from relying so heavily on internal staff assessments. That's not to say that, you know, staff expertise isn't warranted. It certainly is. But what we're looking for, especially with our underground infrastructures or our storm, water, and sanitary, what we ideally would like to see are those third-party CCTV inspections, for example, and then mapping those condition updates to your asset register. So that is typically what we would like to see. The other thing that I would like to draw everyone's attention to that also jumped out at us a little bit was, with machinery and equipment, facilities and vehicles, we've got some assets that are in that poor range as well. And as everyone is aware, that goes back to the unfortunate fire at the Public Works Garage over the last couple of months. So that has been taken into account as well. So yes, it does look like there are a few asset categories that are in poor or very poor condition, but that is because of an unfortunate event or the fact that we're going to be moving from internal staff assessments up to CCTV inspections with our sanitary and water. So all that being said, though, the fact that still 68% of all assets are in fair or better condition is a positive news story. Next slide, please. And again, to kind of conclude and button up the condition portion here, what I'd like for us to kind of focus in on is, the fact that 85% of all assets have some form of assessment is fantastic. And the reason why we say that is because when we don't have these assessed asset condition scores, age will essentially have to rely on an age-based approach as opposed to an actual assessment. So what that typically will do is indicate that the asset is in worse condition than it actually is. So the fact that 85% of all assets have been assessed, again, is a good news story. But again, what I would like for us to draw our attention to is if we take a look at our facilities, vehicle machinery, land improvements, which comprise of your outdoor parks and those type of facilities, you'll see that most of these are staff assessments. And again, while these are better than no assessment at all, one of the recommendations that we do have is to begin to shift away from relying so heavily on those staff assessments and begin strategically selecting what high-value assets warrant a third-party external assessment. Next slide, please. And again, please. So just pivoting a little bit here, we've gone through what the total overall replacement costs of our assets were, or are, I should say, and the general overall condition of our assets as well. So what we have been, what we're on the hook for essentially from the province is to identify what our proposed levels of service are going to be over the next 10 years. And what you're looking at here is essentially a checklist to ensure that we're compliant. So we need to, we first need to explain, have an explanation within the asset management plan, why our proposed levels of service are appropriate, some of the natural risks associated with our proposed levels of service and the impact that has on long-term sustainability, how it differs from what is currently being delivered, whether or not these metrics are achievable, and how exactly the municipality is going to afford the target. So essentially, we've got our KPIs from a condition standpoint. What we've done is we've taken a look at the condition of our current assets based on the strategies that are implored by the town. What does that look like in 10 years? And that essentially are, that essentially is the proposed levels of service that we've gone with. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, that essentially was our process. So what we wanted to do was get a good idea of the current condition of our asset portfolio. As I mentioned, we spent the first four or five months alone just going through our database, updating condition scores where appropriate. Of course, staff drive their vehicles all the time. They operate their machinery and land improvements. They know what condition various park and outdoor facilities are in, so we can confidently have those condition scores in there. So based on the town's strategy, we then asked, well, can we project out the condition scores of our assets over the next 10 years? The answer to that is yes, because we understand what the strategies are. We've documented that within the asset management plan. So then what we went ahead and did was update the town's central asset management register, which is essentially, again, just where all the data is housed. So all that to say, ultimately, what our output was, was we were able to project our condition. We were able to provide a quantitative risk score. So this is a score from 0 to 25. And if you, going back a few slides or actually towards the beginning, if we remember that ISO 55000 diagram, there was the performance, so the condition of assets, the inherent risk. So we've taken a quantitative measure in calculating risk. And then based on that, we can then understand what our projected forecasted capital requirements are. So next slide, please. So I know I've given a lot of information. So what exactly does that look like based on our current strategies? So what we're looking at here is for our road network, you will see that the current PCI, so the pavement condition rating, so the average score of our roads is a 61, which is in good condition. What the town can expect over the next 10 years, based on the current strategies, is that there'll be a very slight increase to our, to the assets. That being said, though, you can also see that the average risk associated with that stays very low. So again, that 5.8 and 5.7, that is a score out of 25. So you can see inherently, there is not a very large risk to our road network. And the way that these risk ratings are calculated is we do a very, quite a thorough quantitative analysis, taking a look at what is the probability of your, of a specific asset failing and the consequence of that asset failing, which is typically the replacement cost, how much would it cost to replace it? And then we then chart that out in a five-by-five grid, and that gives a score out of 25. So what you can see, which is fantastic, because the road network is generally the biggest ticket item, and we all experience it on a day-to-day basis. So what we can expect for our roads, based on our current strategy, is that risk will stay relatively the same, which is great. It's going to stay low. And the condition rating is going to slightly improve. Alternatively, though, for our bridges, we can anticipate there being a slight decrease. Now, when we take a look at that and we say, wow, it's going from 69 to 56, that's very dramatic. However, based on our external reports, so our OSIM report, for example, which is done by a third-party engineering firm, we've taken all of, all of those recommendations into account. And because bridges naturally have a very long service life, essentially, when it goes from a 69 to a 56, that is just a very slow natural deterioration of the asset. What we're not, we are definitely not saying that it's going to go from 69 to 56, and there's going to be multiple bridge closures and detours. We're definitely not saying that. What we're saying is that, based on our, based on the internal report that we have, and based on our anticipated capital expenditure, the bridges aren't going to be a priority for the next 10 years. At least initially, of course, things change. And like I said at the very beginning, asset management is fluid. So when you do see certain asset categories go from, let's say, a 69 to a 56, or something similar to that, what we're doing, though, however, is understanding and realizing that that is a risk that we understand. We know what that risk is, and based on financial sustainability and what makes sense for the town, that is a risk that we inherently are willing to take on. Next slide, please. Again, what we're looking at here is a summary of our water, sanitary, and storm. So we've kind of just grouped everything here in one slide. And again, what we can anticipate over the next 10 years is for our water network, there's going to be a slight natural depreciation or deterioration, I should say, of our asset conditions. But if we take a look at our sanitary and our storm, essentially, what we're saying is there's going to be a little bit of a trade-off. So because our storm network is at a 65, we're going to allow that to decrease down to a 56, to then allow our sanitary and storm network to catch up as well. And again, the fantastic thing that we've done here is, we've got the condition rating as well, but we've also got that average risk rating as well. So just because there may be a natural deterioration of assets, keep in mind and take with a grain of salt, we'll also take a look at that average risk rating. If, for example, if our water network is going to go from 65 to 56, but our risk rating is only going to go up by 1.9, and that's out of a score of 25, that's an appropriate risk that the town can carry. Next slide, please. Again, for our facilities and our land improvements, a couple caveats here. Firstly, with the facilities, we anticipate that this is going to change quite dramatically over the next year or two. And I will, I'll speak to that in the coming slides, but we anticipate that this is going to change quite dramatically over the next couple of years. But that being said, if we were to just maintain our current strategy and the recommendations within the asset management plan, the overall condition rating would stay generally around the same. And with the land improvements there, I do want to indicate that the big caveat with this is you can see that it is a, quite a significant drop there. So from a 70, which is good, to a 50, which is in fair condition. The reason for that is because if we, if you take a look at the asset management plan, you'll see that our land improvements generally, they really don't account for that much of our total asset portfolio. So it may only account for 1% to 5%, whereas our road network accounts for, let's say, 15% to 20%. So it's all about, it's all about shifting priorities and understanding what's the most important and most critical for the town. And next slide, please. And then just to finish up with our vehicles and machinery and equipment, again, both of these, I believe, will change quite dramatically. And again, I'll discuss why that is. But for example, with the unfortunate fire at the Public Works Garage, there was quite a few assets that were damaged. They may need to be replaced or written off. So I understand that is something that the folks at the town are going through right now and kind of understanding, well, what assets need to be replaced, which ones will be insured, and so on and so forth. So, but that being said, we still did need to provide a proposed metric to ensure that we are compliant with the province. So what we did essentially was say, okay, based on the current strategy and how we currently replace our assets, what does, what would that look like for the next 10 years? And again, because both vehicles and machinery and equipment don't carry a very high replacement cost, that natural depreciation of 52 to 42 is honestly not too much. And alternatively, even from 40 to 55 of the average condition, we would still say that the machinery and equipment assets are still in pretty fair condition. So, next slide, please. So what we've gone ahead and done then, up to this point, is we've reviewed all of the, we reviewed all of the current conditions of our assets. We did a projected risk and condition score for the next 10 years. So then what we needed to do was understand, well, are we going to be able to actually afford this? And based on, based on the historical expenditure at the town, we believe that the proposed levels of service metrics that are within the asset management plan are indeed achievable. So the first thing that I would like everyone to draw their attention to is, you can see the average annual requirement, investment required is about 5.8 million across our tax-funded assets. So this is everything except for our water and sanitary network. So the requirement is 5.8 million, and you can see that the total amount that the town has is about 3.4 million, leaving a deficit of 2.4. And you can see that the total amount that the town has is about three point four million, leaving a deficit of two point four. So essentially, what this means is, as uh all other debt is paid off and and put towards um our our assets, and as we uh propose this thirteen percent increase over the next five, ten, fifteen years, what we can uh uh essentially anticipate is that naturally, there's going to have to be some sort of an increase. Um, now, if you go to the next slide, please. It's a, it's very similar to our um, our tax funded assets, where our rate funded assets, uh it looks quite similar. So the average annual investment required is four point six million, whereas we've only got one point three million available on a on a year to year basis. So uh the, what you, when you take a look at the asset management plan for both our water and sanitary uh asset categories, there's naturally going to be a a higher recommended rate increase as opposed to the tax funded assets. And you can see that on the next slide. So you can find this within the asset management plan in section one point four. Um, and essentially, what we're, what we are recommending is a fifteen year phase in. So what that means is on a year to year basis, a zero point five increase to your tax uh to your property tax rate, and for your water and sanitary, a four and a three point one percent annual increase. Uh, we, of course, acknowledge that this can and will be difficult to do. Uh, and it's for that reason that uh not to not to hammer home this this point, but uh it's it's critical. The important thing is that once better data becomes available, once we we uh have new building condition assessments or uh there's been uh uh new new assets that have been brought into the the asset register, once better information becomes available, this needs to be reviewed on an annual basis. Uh, as I said, this is a snapshot in time, this is based on the most updated relevant information we have right now. So basically, what we're saying is, yeah, if we take a snapshot in time and nothing was to change, for uh uh what we would be recommending is a zero point five percent increase to your property taxes, and that zero point five percent would be going straight to capital, not not just operating, but strictly to capital. And for water and sanitary, four percent and three point one percent respectively. Uh, you can skip over two slides, please. So in regards to takeaways and action items, first and foremost, again, to reiterate, uh asset management is evolving. And like I said, good data really, I can't stress this enough, good data is the backbone of, you know, setting, recording, adjusting any type of metrics. Because of that, and uh because of what I'm going to mention in the next slide, the idea essentially is to start small, pick me, pick standardized metrics, and then expand in twenty thirty, when we're legislatively required. So it's, let's start small, let's have good data, and then in five years' time, we can expand and and start bringing in more uh more metrics as we need. And that being said, as updated data, reports, studies become available, it's going to be extremely critical um that these reports and studies are integrated into the asset register. It's extremely important from a planning perspective that these reports and studies don't just stand idle once they're completed. They need to be actively worked on and brought into the asset register. That being said, the, as it stands right now, the town has selected tangible, realistic and sustainable targets for the next ten year. Next slide, please. And because of that, our uh recommendation is that council today, as per section eight of Ontario Regulation five eighty eight seventeen, firstly, approve the plan by resolution, and then authorize staff to uh to post the document on the town's website. Uh, before we we wrap up here, and before we get into the Q and A, there is um something, as I mentioned a couple slides ago, that I did want to bring up. And this is uh our, we're strongly recommending that there be an update to the asset management plan next year. And we've uh at the very least circled four reasons why. The first one being the IT strategy. So it's our understanding that uh currently the the town is is in the works of uh implementing an IT strategy, uh understanding all of the different assets it owns. Uh, it owns and manages, so this is everything from like servers and firewalls and and all that good stuff. Uh, all of our IT infrastructure, as it stands right now, that's not in the asset register. So what we're uh, what our recommendation is, is once that um asset register has been built out, it should most certainly be brought into the uh the citywide software. Um, and there should be an update to the asset management plan. Secondly, with scheduled building condition assessments, so it's our understanding that uh at some point next year, there will be comprehensive uh building condition assessments done on a variety of facilities. And this is absolutely fantastic. And the reason why we say that is because, as of right now, uh a lot of facilities have those staff assessments. And we're not saying that it's not valuable and it's not useful. But with the external building condition assessments that are scheduled for next year, I believe, what we're going to be able to have is a very detailed componentized or asset listing. So just a a little bit of information, as of right now, um if we take a look at our asset register, it'll say Town Hall or Community Center, and it'll be one asset. With the uh implementation uh and integration of those building condition assessments into citywide, one facility, there will be, every single thing will be listed out, whether from boiler to floors to electrical work. So it'll be a highly componentized breakout, which of course is fantastic. The third thing that we want to note is that uh the the subject matter experts within the town are currently undergoing and and working on some internal forecasted capital expenditures for the next five to ten years. I believe uh I believe it's five years, but the my understanding, or our understanding, I should say, is that the staff is currently working on this, and this should be ready to go within the next few months. And because of that, um it would be uh, you know, prudent to bring in those forecasted capital expenditures into the asset register as well, because that'll give us better um better uh, better and more accurate reporting. And lastly, um, and the, yeah, the last point there in regards to the public works garage and the impacted assets. Um, like I said, unfortunately, with that public works garage being uh being damaged in the fire, uh there's a lot, a lot of things up in um in the air right now, uh just in regards to whether uh it'll be a very thorough rehabilitation, or it'll be a complete replacement. Uh, but it's not just the facility itself, it's all those impacted assets, right? So there's a few vehicles in there that have been impacted, there's some machinery and equipment as well. So for these uh four reasons, uh among others, and you know, including uh there being some CCTV footage, which we'd like to to bring in to update our our underground infrastructure. But these uh, at a minimum, these four reasons, we're very strongly recommending that there should be an update to the AMP next year. Um, because we're going to have a lot better, uh more thorough data. So uh ultimately, that is, that is our final recommendation. And uh, that concludes the the presentation. I I hope you found that to be uh informative. I'll open it up to see if there are any uh questions or comments.
All right, thanks. Uh, I was just started off. Uh, Council McKenna?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Schwarmo. Uh, appreciate the information. I had a a couple of questions, but what is just about uh Reg five eighty eight seventeen under the Infrastructure and Prosperity Act? Uh, when you talk about either the financial strategy in particular, how uh detailed or prescriptive is it? Is it, we've, I'm assuming that the rate uh that you've suggested, or that the group suggested of point five, four point oh, or three point one, or increase annually? Uh, we set those levels, but how prescriptive is the regulation in telling us? Is there um, is that a minimum, what we put in there, or?
Right, okay. No, that's that's a, that's a great question. So the way we've written the document, the the target KPIs for the next ten years, they're condition based, as opposed to saying we must increase our capital expenditure by four percent or five percent or zero point five percent. So it's tied to the actual condition of the assets. Um, it's for that reason as well that with some of our asset categories, we wanted to ensure that we are picking financially sustainable targets. So that's why in some cases, there's a slight depreciation, because we realize that in some years, you may not be able to have a five percent increase or a four percent increase for for whatever reason. There's there's plenty of reasons as to why that is. So the target as per ORAG, and to make sure that we're compliant with the Ontario Regulation, it isn't directly tied to, okay, we must impro- increase our property tax by zero point five every year. It's more so tied to, well, what is the condition of our asset? And the other thing, and the other caveat that I'll throw in there as well is when we're taking a look at your financial strategy, it is one hundred percent from sustainable funding sources. So it's your property taxes, your OCIF funding, and your CCBF funding, which was formerly known as the gas tax. So uh we know on a year to year basis that the town, the um the the finance department is going to apply for certain grants, which will also greatly improve the condition of our assets. So what we're saying is uh these are baseline minimum condition scores, which we have very high degree of confidence in that we will meet. And in or in order for us to do so, we recommend these rates. However, it may, it may not be the case every single year.
Okay, thank you. I just have a one more, if I could. Um, there's a lot of uh, you call it fluid, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of data in and out. Um, if we change the tax rate or the increase in the rate for water, wastewater, it has a ripple effect effect over the next because if we, if we skip it this year, it means we've got to go higher next year.
Yeah.
It seems, it seems to me that there, maybe there's already a artificial intelligence tool or software that you could feed this in, and you could do your scenarios. Does that exist?
Uh, yeah, so uh no, again, uh thank you for the question. Um, in regards to um like those, those, uh what we, what we're calling like scenarios, for example, it's a, it's a great idea, and what we're saying, the metrics we've selected um for this twenty twenty five asset management plan, and like I, like you said, like, it's it's very fluid. The reason for that is because it it's going to be, it's going to look very different next year. So essentially, what the asset management plan is saying is stay par for the course for the next year. So my under, our our understanding is that um I believe the uh internally, the recommended increase is five percent for water, uh Paul, correct me if I'm if I'm incorrect there, but I believe it's five percent. Um, so our recommendations are essentially tied to the the expertise and the knowledge uh at at the at the staff level. Um, and to answer your question, though, like this, it's going to look very different, and it's going to be, it's going to look quite different next year, once the IT strategy is done, those building condition assessments are done. Uh, we certainly don't want to com- want to commit to, let's say, that four or three percent for the next ten years without reviewing on an annual basis.
Okay, and I think next year is is a great year to update it. It'll be an election year, and I think the more discussion we have next year, uh informing the public about the value of this asset manager plan and the consequences of why councils, future councils will be talking about increases. It's, we aren't making it up, it's a, so it'll be great. It'll be great, thank you.
Yes, certainly. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Council McKenna. Uh, Mayor Panko?
Sure, thanks, Ruin. There's um very valued document, I think it provides great guidance going forward, but a few, a number of questions.
Yep.
Uh, the condition assessment was done in, based on twenty twenty three, is that correct?
Um, are you key, are you keying in on a certain, certain category? Because um, certain categories, there were some assessments done in twenty three, somewhere in twenty twenty four. Was there any specifically that jumped out to you?
Well, well, I guess a couple, um, it's a little confusion, I guess. So so when we talk about our uh elevated tank, our water storage, our water tower. So, I mean, we're we're willing to replacing that. It'll be act, up and running this year, but it, the the information here, I think, indicates it's at forty five years into a sixty five year lifespan. Is that, am I interpreting that correct?
Right, so there there could be, uh, I don't have the information uh out in front of me right now, but there's, there's a few reasons for that. Um, if there have been any type of uh betterments to that asset, for example. So typically, what we'll see in the asset register is you've got a water tank, it's a, it's one line item. And it could be from, let's say, nineteen seventy five, just to, just to throw it out there. However, uh when the, when all that data gets analyzed, there may have been a better, a betterment or an addition in, let's say, two thousand eight or two thousand eleven. So if you're, if it does, if within the report, it's indicating that it's forty five years, what it's doing is aggregating all of those betterments into into one. So it's not necessarily saying it's forty five years old. What it's saying is, on average, all of the assets and line items pertaining to that elevated tank, that's how old it would be.
Okay, I'll, 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 that doesn't quite give me the understanding I'm looking for, but I'll I'll leave that one for the moment. But um, so looking at, I I assume a sanitary sewer includes your combined sewers?
Yes.
Okay, so we know that that's one of our biggest challenges. And mo- and a lot of that, a lot of them would be poor or very poor. They're also very old, we recognize that. At the same time, we have streets which are in most reasonably good condition, water mains which are in uh not quite as good as as the streets, but better, in better condition than sanitary sewers or storm sewers. But I guess we're, we're going to replace the si- the sanitary storm sewers. We're going through the water mains and the and the and the road bed.
Right.
So I almost like, so I guess the plan, I assume we would have to continue if we're going to be going down to the bottom into the sewers, we're going to be replacing the water and obviously on, and the road bed. So is that, I guess, maybe, maybe it's more of a question for Director McMunn, where strategically, I guess, how would we tackle that work to make sure that we are uh providing the best value? I mean, targeting theirs, it needs to work the most, while not rip up a road service that's actually reasonably good condition.
Right.
So is that, so is that, if if part of the issue here, I guess, we've got an average represents, of course, the condition of everything, whereas we have some which are in very, very poor condition.
Right.
And we're talking water mains in that area are poorer as well. So maybe I'm just being a little confused by the overall.
No, 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 it's a, it's a great question. So what I can uh, what I can tell you is that um our understanding is that staff is currently going through that process of putting that five to ten year capital forecast, uh those capital projections together. Uh, in doing so, you're, you you hit the nail on the head there, where um we want to make sure that when roads or underground infrastructure is being replaced, that it's streamlined with the impacted assets, right? So if there's two roads, for example, and we uh one is in a thirty condition, and another one is in forty condition, but we know the one that's got that better condition has a lot of underlying issues with underground infrastructure. We we know uh, we've got a lot of uh great expertise within the town um to indicate and to ensure that when we go through this process next year of updating the asset management plan, that that will be taken into account. So we're always looking to streamline projects that'll be the most cost effective. So it's it's a great question.
And I have to assume there's a lot more granular data that staff would be reviewing than what we are seeing here.
Yeah, uh, yeah, a thousand percent, yeah.
You have one more question, Mr. Chair? Uh, I've got a couple more, I'm gonna focus on one more here. Estimated replacement values. So our financial plan is going to be dependent on having reasonably accurate replacement values.
Yeah.
And looking at at just a few things here, seems like um we're probably underestimating the replacement cost of certain items, and I'll use the airport as one example. So we've got, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, I think, for replacement of asset. Right, I think there's the, I mean, the assets there that are probably nearing end of life. Uh, I don't think we'd get very far with two hundred thousand as the example.
Yep. Right, so the way that we've derived the the replacement cost is um ideally, what we would like is what we would call user defined costs. So are they coming from a recent project, a recent tender? Uh, where exactly is that coming from? So that is the i- ideal methodology that we would like to have. In lieu of that, though, the only thing that we can really do is just inflate that historical, which I I and I think we're going to be in agreement here, which is by no means uh ideal. So uh, like I said, though, when we are uh going through the asset management plan, or just if we, if we're taking a look at a certain replacement cost, and we're saying, well, that that seems a bit low. I I'm in agreement with you, but we don't have any external I I'm in agreement with you, but we don't have any external information to indicate to us what exactly that cost would be. Right, so it's certainly a gap within the asset management plan. And it's for that reason that there's there uh is that legislative uh requirement where we at least we review the plan on an annual basis. So that if like, for example, you've identified, okay, the airport looks a little bit low, that should be investigated from here and then by next year, we should have we should have updated costs in some form or another, I in an ideal situation.
Okay, thank you. What's someone else right now?
Councilor Brennan. Yep, thanks for this and uh I guess we could say this is a pretty high level look at our asset management. I haven't had a chance to go through the the document itself yet, but I have read this a few times during the weekend. The one question I had and just um on the financial outlook page, uh you're talking about, you know, uh our available money is is three point three and yet we're we're two point four behind. And then on the other box beside it, it's a adds up to a three thirteen percent.
Right.
And so the next page or a couple pages down, it's point five percent. So is the thirteen? What's the relationship between those numbers?
Okay, so what we're saying is that uh as debt is paid off and reallocated towards uh funding this deficit, uh as debt is paid off and put towards capital, um what we need to do for fifteen years is increase on an annual basis of zero point five percent. So tha- that's exactly uh what that number means. And it's it's the same thing for the water and sanitary. What we're saying is, once debt is paid off and it's reallocated to capital, uh what we're saying is at a minimum, four to four percent for our water and three point one percent for our sanitary would need to be relocated to those respective categories uh strictly for the purpose of um for capital projects.
Okay, thanks.
Um all right, thanks. I think um I'm wondering, is that point five percent based on, does that does it matter whether that comes out of the growth amount or that's on top of existing base? Or how would that that point five percent be calculated?
So. Yep, so that that zero point five percent annual increase would be to your to the property tax on an annual basis for fifteen years. But uh Paul, I think you could probably add to that.
Uh Director Dobber?
So I think what Ruin's getting at at that point, it's a dedicated amount to add, so oh. So sorry. Please excuse me, sorry, through the chair. Um what everyone's getting at is is an overall tax increase. So right now, we our twenty twenty five budget, there is about one point eight million that went to capital. So it's adding to that another half a percent. So right now, um uh um I think that adds up to, is that four hundred thousand dollars? Half of a twenty million dollar um uh levy increase. So we'd be looking at adding four hundred thousand dollars every year to that, and that would account for the point five percent. With the four percent for the water, we're currently increasing by five point five percent. If we were to say four percent of that five point five percent increase was to specifically go to capital and one point five is to go to operating, we're golden. But if we can't accommodate an operating increase of 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 one point five uh capturing all of our operating increases, then then we need to look at adjusting and increasing it and and so forth for the uh for the sanitary portion. Uh I'm sorry, I can't remember off the hand, but it's three point five is what our our um current increase is and and I think it was something like three on the uh on the asset management plan. So uh again, can accommodate with point five percent in operating that uh and dedicating that three percent to capital, then we need to look at increasing that in order to accomplish the goals if council chooses to adopt that and move forward with those recommendations.
Um I have a question on the roads data. Wondering, you know, if it's about twenty three point three percent that that's in poor or very poor condition. And I think if you said it in to anybody in town, oh, one in four, one in five roads are in poor condition or worse, they'd probably disagree that the number's higher. So I'm wondering if is there any red flags with that data or what are the limitations on that data?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, there there certainly is limitation with that uh being that those internal uh condition assessments are from a few years ago. So um it is certainly recommended that uh again, staff continue to improve and and update the asset register. They are certainly a few years old. Um I believe some of them are from tw- twenty twenty one, uh some are from even twenty nineteen. So um it's for that reason that uh I think uh what we I really hammered home the point where we've got to we've got to transition away from relying so heavily on those staff assessments. Um or if we are going to rely on those staff assessments, it's go it has to be updated um on a bit more schedule basis. So uh that would be our recommendation there. So to answer your question, though, some certainly some of them are a little outdated for sure.
Um maybe looking to committee, we've talked in the past about when it came up for the uh the annual paving and milling program about how the conditions assessments worked and how things were being prioritized. Is there any appetite from the committee to get a presentation from staff at a future meeting on on what these assessment reports are, how up to date they are and and what uh what the priorities are in town? Seeing some nodding heads.
Sure, yeah.
CEO Mars?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I can advise that Paul and his team are working on the roads needs assessment. So um not sure when that'll be ready, but but when we bring that forward, we could do um kind of an in depth on the the factors that contribute to a numerical assessment or rating of a road. And I I would just say that it's not always just the surface condition of the road. You know, a few bumps doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad road. We take into consideration the subgrade, the slope, the rutting, uh other factors in that road. So so but that could be discussed in more detail when when um Director McMunn brings forward the actual needs study.
Great, seeing nodding heads for that. Um Councilor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So given that we received the full hundred and thirty two pages report just an hour or two ago, um I I guess for next steps, this will go back on another committee of the whole agenda before it goes to council? Yes, nodding heads, okay. Just to give us time to absorb and great, thank you.
Sure, um any other questions, comments uh for everyone? All right, so seeing no other ones, I think that wraps it up for tonight. Thank you very much for joining us.
Great. Thank you very much for having me. It was a pleasure meeting you.
You. Um so with that, do we have any CO directors' reports tonight?
Uh yes, Mr. Chair, we have two uh both from uh me. So the first one is uh really great news uh about a different type of asset, uh trees, in fact. Uh so we have a small orchard at the Heritage House Museum at the the back of the property. And those trees are uh to use asset management language, are life expired. So we're going to be replacing them with a number of different fruit trees. And the good news is staff, Lisa and her staff, were able to get funding from Tree Canada to pay for the entire replacement. It's forty four hundred dollars, so there won't be a direct cost to the uh to the local taxpayer. But I'm delighted to share that we've got five different varieties of apple uh trees. And I would note, they're all heirloom varieties, so not genetically modified uh species. So we have uh five different apples, Cortland, for instance, is an heirloom variety, Macintosh is another example. Uh we have a cherry tree, cherry trees going in, um a blueberry, choke cherry. And uh I think that's it. So a variety of different fruit trees. Um and the uh Smithville Horticultural Horticultural Society are partnering with us on this initiative to plant and remove the old ones. So uh big shout out to to that volunteer group for helping. And this is really going to help with educational efforts at the Heritage House. Um there will be um things that will emerge from this, like workshops on canning and preserving fruits. So there will be an educational component to it. Food Bank uh will be involved, so uh there is a food security element to this as well. So really good news story from the Heritage House and we expect the plantings to happen later this year.
Any questions? I've got one. How will we prune and maintain them or what's the, how's that side of it work?
Uh good question. I don't uh Lisa would know the answer to that. I don't know if there's been outreach to community services, not yet. But we'll make sure that we have either in-house expertise or hired expertise to do that. It's not terribly difficult to do it in February, but that's something I think we can probably do in-house.
That's good.
And and I would add, uh obviously, the Horticultural Society would have would have expertise in that and could help as well.
Great. Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, uh so another announcement, uh equally exciting. Uh I would like to acknowledge uh tremendous efforts on the part of Director Clark. She recently received her MBA, so uh uh no small undertaking. She had started it before coming here and two years later. Uh despite a very heavy workload here, was able to find time to finish a an exceptionally higher education accomplishment. So her focus was on public sector management, uh no surprise there. And she gets to use that skill every day of the week. So uh her MBA is from the University of York in jolly old England. So uh we're very proud of her accomplishments and her commitment to continuing education.
Great. All right, seeing no questions, we will go to our in-camera session. Uh we're gonna move over by Council Brennan, seconded by Council Robinson, the Council of the Corporation of the Tenus Smith Falls. As amended, move into a closed meeting at uh six oh two PM to discuss a personal matter about an infirmable individual. On our favor? It's curious. All right, so with that, we'll add ten point six committee appointment to the priority issues and move into our new ten point one renaming the seniors activity building with the Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh bringing forward the second report this evening regarding the renaming of the seniors activity building. Uh there was a request brought forward about a little less than a month ago to rename the seniors activity building after Mr. Bud Fawcett. Uh we have gone through the process that's outlined in our policy. Uh we've done consultation with staff, we've done public consultation. Uh we've brought the first report to committee uh about two or exactly two weeks ago this evening. Uh we did receive four notes regard for public feedback, all uh obviously well received and good comments, but for the most part, it was submissions regarding the name. We did have four submissions for the the report does have have three, but I received a late submission on Friday. We've had four submissions submissions for the Bud Fawcett Senior Center. We've had two submissions submissions for Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Activity Center and one submission for the Bud Fawcett and Friends Senior Activity Center. And those were requests that staff brought forward, as well as the four submissions from the public. Uh so I bring this forward uh to council tonight for uh to choose the the name. And then staff will have direction uh for signage at the facility. And if council so chooses um some sort of um festivities to uh for to I guess, for formally adopt the new name at the center.
Great, uh we've got Council Miller, then Council Brennan.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Costello, and um it's great that so many weighed in on this. Um the family of Mr. Fawcett has let me know that their choice would be the Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Center, which is the second one in your list. So that would be my choice would be to honor their wishes.
Uh Council Brennan?
Yeah, I uh Bud used to live next door to me and his daughter still does, so I've gotten that message as well. And I've also gotten the similar message from uh from Ronnie Hughes, who's in the audience with Brent Witten tonight, uh that that would be their preference as well, so I fully support that.
Council Robinson?
I totally support that one as well.
Mayor Panko?
Yeah.
Thumbs up, great. Give your direction.
The Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Activity Center.
Senior Center or Senior Activity Center?
Whatever's in the word here.
Senior Activity Center. We noted, so this uh with council's concurrence with the special meeting this evening, this can be brought forward.
So it's the seniors activity center?
Yeah.
Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Activity Center. Notting heads. Thank you.
Great, um so that moving on to ten point two is Via Rail Station Snow Clearing Contract with Director Clark.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. So just a quick report for information. Uh as you're likely aware, we have an ongoing contract with Via Rail that is related to snow clearing and upkeep of the station. Uh the current snow removal contract has expired and we'll be going out to market to secure another contract this summer. Our current agreement with Via expires twenty thirty one and I believe is a twenty year agreement. We will likely be seeking a contract that expires for snow clearing uh that expires simultaneous to this. So I will be back later this year with results of our competition with a request for pre-budget approval, but I just wanted to give you a heads up not to be surprised when I come back asking for money.
Questions, comments? Uh you've got your direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh so that we go to uh Rito Lake's ATV Club requests to amend the ATV bylaw with Director McMunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of council. Uh the report I have in front of you this evening is just uh with respect to a request from the ATV club to make permanent uh a route through town. Um currently, their trail um which comes down Matheson Drive, makes its way over down Rito Avenue, Uplorn, um and eventually gets its way out. Uh County Road seventeen is somewhat bisected um as a result of certain roads that are in the applicable bylaws uh for ATV use in town, uh which don't allow them on certain streets, notably Queen Street, Old Slides and. which don't allow them on certain streets, notably Queen Street, Old Slides and Jasper Avenue. So with that, I'll read the recommendations. The council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls amend bylaws 10278-2021 and 10279-2021 to authorize Rita Lake's All-Terain Vehicle Club access in town streets and municipal lands that currently per pivot access. And further, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute applicable amending agreements with Rita Lake's All-Terain Vehicle Club as presented in committee the whole report 2025-066. So as council will recall, last August, almost a year ago, or a little over a year ago now, the ATV Club through my office requested permission from from council to use the roads that I noted earlier for a charity ride, which was hosted by the ATV Club, took place on Saturday, September 21st, 2024. As I understand it, the charity ride was a huge success. It it brought some awareness to riders that don't necessarily live or reside in Smith Falls or in Rita Lake's township. You know, it presented an opportunity for them to navigate through the trail, through town, and to patronize some of the the stores throughout town as well during that event. I have consulted with both the fire department and the Smith Falls Police Service following the event last September. No notable issues from the police service and/or the fire. And I've talked to them as well after drafting this report and and the same thing still stands. They didn't have any issues with ATV ridership through through town. So we the town council does have an agreement with the Rita Lake's ATV Club for trail use throughout town. So we would need to with with council's concurrence here this evening, myself and the clerk could go to work to amend that agreement to reflect the the ask here tonight in the in the staff report. And of course, we'd have to amend the one schedule of the bylaw as well to take into account the use of Queen Street between Hershey Drive and Old Slides Road and then Old Slides from Queen up to Jasper Avenue intersection and from that point down to where Jasper Avenue turns into County Road 17. So it allowed them permission to use that those three sections of roadway. So with that, through the chair, I'm happy to take any questions. I I just would want to say that the I think the report kind of speaks for itself, but happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Council Brennan, then Council McKenna.
Yeah, I I support this. I was at that charity event, I think on behalf of the Mirror last year. I fell on the stage, but anyway. But I I didn't realize how many how popular that is. And there was, I would say, hundreds of ATVers there. And so I'm a big supporter and and I I fully support this. One question, and I can't remember the fellow's name with with the club, had inquired afterwards about they were trying to get a route behind, was it behind Heritage House? And they were having a problem with Parks Canada in that respect. So they were trying to stay off the roads, but that didn't work out. So that's why we're going in front of it this time, right?
Yeah, through the chair, I presume it was probably Mike Starr, the president.
Yeah, I think so.
The Rita Lake's ATV Club. Yes, and and Mr. Starr has identified to me that they have had some challenges trying to secure private land agreements for certain sections of the trail. ATV users preferably would like to not be driving on asphalt. It's a very different experience. The ATVs don't respond quite as well on on asphalt as it does on a grass or a dirt surface. So they've made multiple attempts. They haven't been successful. That's why they're coming to council for for some consideration for the ask.
Uh, Council McKenna?
Thank you. Like, Council Brennan, I'm supportive of this recommendation. And the clubs are very well organized and and you see them at the Pro Ventura conferences, responsible drivers with good vehicles. So I'm very supportive. And you might have answered my question. I wondered why they wanted to go around behind and over by our water tower instead of just cutting straight across Hershey Drive. I would offer them that as well. It's an industrial area. But they may prefer the the back way, but I'm very supportive.
What was the reason? Like, was there a reason it's going behind and not Hershey Drive or?
Just just for that reason. So when they come down, make their way from Rita to Lorne, they like to get off-road as much as possible. They'd like to use that easement where hopefully at some point we get our trunk-made upgrade through there, past the tower. They have an option at that point to either come down Walker Road and/or skirt along the property line between the town property and the the Galapo Center. So that's their preference at this point. They'll maintain the trails. They'll 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 cut them in, if you will, and then make their way across Walker Road across Soper Drive to to Hershey. That takes them off the roadway a little bit, a little bit further. The question hasn't been asked here tonight, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, it's council's prerogative if down the road, they want to make changes to the agreement between the town and the Rita Lake's ATV Club. There is a provision in there that that was removed back some time, a couple of years ago, where the provision of the 180-day notice period was removed to give council the ability and the authority to change the to amend the agreement at their will. So where I'm going with that, if the if there's a business park that comes to fruition on Walker Road, kind of at the end of Air Care in and around where that hydro easement is, of course, we would go back to the table and the ATV Club would have to look for a different route. And presumably, at that point, it would be to come down Walker Road to Soper and over to Hershey Drive.
Uh, Council Miller?
My question, thank you, is a little bit impossible to answer, but on our cottage road, we've had to remove ATV access because of the volume. So I'm just wondering if we have any sense of what the volume might be. Did they did the club have a sense of that?
Um, I don't know. I would I would suspect that it's it wouldn't be the volume that we saw come through on the charity ride. And to the point was made earlier, the the ridership, they do, you know, they're very organized and they're very respectful of, you know, the the infrastructure that they're using that that belongs to the town. So there's of no benefit to them to tarnish that relationship. So they're going to be respectful when they come through town. They're going to follow the rules of the road. And I just want to note that all of the provisions of the Highway Traffic Act still have to be here too. You know, they have to be licensed. They have to have insurance. There's a certain, I think it's 20 kilometers an hour speed limit that they can ride up to. But to answer your question, I'm not 100% sure on the on the ridership, but I could certainly find out. Yeah.
Just curious more than anything. Thank you.
My question was just, they're not allowed to use the hydro easement for this kind of stuff? Or is that is that seems like a more logical route for them? I was just wondering what the reasoning was that they're not allowed to use that?
So so through the chairs, to answer your question, the the hydro easement, similar to the section that comes through town along Walker Road, would be town-owned land with hydro having an easement through the property, right? So once you go, I guess, east of Air Care Drive and make your way out to what would be, I don't know, if you were to drive straight at Lorne Street, eventually you're going to get into private lands, and those are the agreements they have not been able to secure with with private landowners.
Okay, so that's not the limiter. It's the stuff around it to cross the tracks. Okay, seeing no other questions, comments, thumbs up?
And just, I guess, for clarification, it's not that we're allowing ATVs on all streets. It's just a new path or a new trail through town.
Right, there'd be a concession in the schedule to allow them to traverse down Queen Street, Old Slides Road and that short section of Jasper until they get on to onto the County Road 17.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Mayor Panko?
Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, there's they can already already use Abbott, parts of Lombard, Herald on that end of town to be able to get through on. So that's we have an agreement already in place for that area. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Nothing in the schedule would would change at this point. They would still have approval to use those streets. It would be just the addition of those short three sections of road. Yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that'll bring us to 10.4, engaging green, creating engaging spaces through a trail network. Director Clark?
Hello again. So I am back again for you this evening with report 2025-031. So I'm seeking your support and asking that you adopt Trail Standards Plan, the Parks and Open Space Connectivity Guide, and the Connected Trails Implementation Plan as amended to guide this department in development of a connected engaging green space in the coming years. I incorporated much of the comments, or many of the comments, rather, that were released last time, and these were updated and that document was provided as well. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Council Miller?
Staring at me, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thanks, Director Clark. So last week, we talked about, or sometime in the last couple of weeks, talked about the the temporary parking lot at Lombard Street, which I understood to be temporary. This particular report still leads me to believe that that's we're going to keep investing in that space. And I'm just wondering if we can reword that because I still would like the opportunity for us to have a conversation about where the best location is for an ultimate trailhead or whether there's two of them. So just a couple of concerns still with this report. I I was concerned with the timing given our strategic priorities, and I understand that that hasn't changed. I still just want to register my concern there. And also, I just really would like to have a visioning discussion, kind of a big picture of, okay, what does what does this all look like? And I appreciate that that some of this is covered there, but I think those trailheads are going to be an important piece. I also know that staff are looking at the Memorial Center. So we've got a couple of options to talk about, but I I think that conversation needs to be held here. So just wanted to make those notes.
So if I may, just in general, I think we're talking about two separate items. So for me, the the trailhead that we're speaking of last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was, it is remaining in a temporary situation until such time as we understand the use patterns and whether or not we do want to invest. And so I think, again, this is the intention is not to commit council between now and the future to adding washrooms and water stations and things like that unless it makes sense. And if there's money and there's a number of aspirational pieces, as Council Brennan liked to point out, that I make my documents that way. So it it would be a further conversation before we invest in infrastructure to make it less temporary. We also need to to wait on the OP and all of those pieces that need to come to fruition. I think separately and apart, and as I mentioned the last time I was talking about this, the trailhead in general, there's something bigger, there's something more, there's something better, and there's something that is going to take a lot more time to to consider. It's not that we haven't had it on the the docket for consideration, but I think we first and foremost need to understand how we're going to get those trails into town to figure out where we're going to put them. And so to me, the logical space would be the Memorial Community Center, as it already is a zone of recreation. But at the same time, maybe that's not the pace. And that would be a conversation for the for the community to have. And so we'd be looking at doing that in the coming months, hopefully within 2026. I'm full disclosure, this is something that's probably a 10-year, possibly longer plan. You know, I don't think we can necessarily have. I want to manage expectations. I don't think we can have a really nice trailhead facility before 2026 is over, but I think we can start making those aspirations come to to fruition. And there is an opportunity, as we're looking at the Memorial Community Center space, to sort of bring some some synergies in terms of recreation, but also coalesce those those ideas and and get people in so that we can use them more effectively and use the space that we have. So they're separate items in my mind. I understand, you know, why we're there. There's the same thing ultimately. Trailhead is a trailhead, but I think we need to look at them as as separate projects. And so we're going to continue with this one that's been the temporary one for now. And the cat trail is really excited from what I understand. But the other piece is that bigger picture stuff because we also need to speak with the TransCanada Trail. Their trail is still running over a bridge that you'd have to take a leap over to get. So we're still trying to work with our partners on that to figure out how best to get people into our into our community and through in a safe way.
Governor Panko and then Council McKenna?
Thank you. And so overall, I'm I'm very supportive of of the plans. I think it gives us that map we need going forward to focus on the areas that require the the greatest priority, create the greatest priority and and how to invest in the future. As for discussion with Councilor Miller, I look at the the trailhead and parking on Lombard as it may be it may be a long-term solution that would ultimately simply serve the cat trail area, the people who'll be utilizing that, if we were ever able to make a more suitable trailhead, a more ideal trailhead encompassing the OVRT and Rita Trail, TransCanada Trail, especially recognizing, I mean, the biggest barrier to OVRT, of course, is the elevated CP line. And there was an old, there was one point, there was a an opening through that that was filled in a number of years ago. The bridge was removed. And so I I agree. It's a long-term plan. We've discussed this probably 10 years ago, or close to 10 years ago, and did a tour out there to take a look at some of the challenges we have. And ideally, we'll get there at some point in time. But that said, I think it's still important, I think, to create this space to support the cat trail and the opportunity that comes with that. But other than that, as I say, I'm very pleased with what I see here. It's there's a lot of information, a lot of direction, but in the end, I think the plan that we need to support indoors to enable staff to move ahead, look for grant opportunities and to seek a path forward. So just a couple of questions directly to Director Clark. I guess from accessibility standpoint, we've talked about that before, we do have challenges in trying to to accommodate all the accessibility needs, drainage needs, cost as well as as well as, I would say, trying to work within the priorities of Parks Canada on properties along the canal. And is, I guess, I don't know, there's even a question in there. It's more about just how do we how do we find and balance all of these needs and come up with something that's suitable?
A way to put me on the spot. No, I mean, I'm up for a challenge. I think that's that's the key is that we have to find a balance. And I think it's it's about making sure that we're compliant in terms of regulations and we're also having conversations with those on the Accessibility Advisory Committee and so on, and and making sure that Parks Canada is in and in early. And so we've got some really good relationships forging with them in terms of the new folks that have been placed in in positions that were previously vacated. So I think I have hope around those kind of conversations and moving forward. We may not be able to hit all of the marks. I think I know to be truly, you know, have the the highest ability for accessibility would would be very expensive, and I think it's out of our price range. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't strive for it, and it doesn't mean we shouldn't plan for it and look for funding for it. So I think we have the opportunity to go, you know, aim high and achieve as best we can. And everything is incremental. I mean, I think about where this, some of the the park spaces were two and a half years ago. And I think, like, look how far it's really exciting in the next 10 years, where we're going to be. And even we were mapping out this morning, our just this plug for the old Home Week Fun Run to 5 and 10K. It's going to be great. We were mapping out the route for it, and we have much more, a much better understanding of where our trails go, how they connect, what's safer, because we've done this work. And now that will allow us to, I think, give us a good foundation to do even better work in the future. So I don't have an exact answer on that, but I do think we have the desire and the hope and the and the capacity to do that right now. So.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just, I think the second one just relates to, we've got, would be winter maintenance. And and how much of the trail system do we believe we can maintain? Maybe it's not an answer for tonight, but in an ideal world, we're able to provide year-round usage of at least some of the trails, right?
Yeah. And I think the the intention would be that's where we'd like to move. And whether it's walkability or whether it's skiability or whatever, you know, whatever that looks like, I think we can start incrementally again when we're doing the planning and sections and and make sure that we are opening up things as we can. So we are, that is in the back of our mind in terms of the development of what we're looking at. I'm not a good skier, but I'm an avid skier, and it's, you know, I think that that's such a beautiful spot in the middle of winter to go down the trail. So why wouldn't we? I think this is an asset that I want folks to really understand and use. I think in addition to that, you know, I was, I I shouldn't be, but I was shocked by how walkable this community actually is. We can walk across the bridge. We can get, we just have to make sure that those those spaces are safe for folks to do so. And I think this is hopefully going to help the the walkability of this community be understood, better understood, and the walkshed's better understood as well.
Thank you. We've got Counselor Quinn, then Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. And yes, Director Clark, the cat trail is thrilled with the fact that we're moving forward with a trailhead for the Catarochway Trail. But they're also very interested in the fact that you're working on a plan to eventually get all these trails connected because that's what they feel is that they want to be part of the other trails as well and be able to connect to them and make sure that people that are on the Catarochway Trail know where to go to be able to connect up with this. So they're, they are thrilled. And it's going to take a while, but it's taken a while to get to this stage. And here we are now starting. So this is excellent. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, just speaking of winter maintenance and that. Am I mistaken though that some of these trail connectivities are going to be sidewalks there? So they already are winter maintenance. The majority of them, there's very few purpose-built trails that we have. Most of our networking is either for cycling or for walking. It's going to be on the sidewalks.
Yeah, that is so not totally inaccurate. I think I would say we have, I think it's about 17 kilometers worth of trail. We have, I can't speak to how much sidewalk we have, but probably significantly more than that. But the the 17 kilometers of trail is specifically trail. So that would be what we'd be looking at, having to learn how to to winter maintain. So most of it is obviously beside the, through Lower Reach, beside the canal and things like that.
A lot of our
A lot of it is interconnection. Yeah.
Thanks.
Right. I've still got, I really like this version. It's a big improvement of the last one. There's still five things in this version I'd like to see tweaked before it's approved. The first is under the multi-use trail section 2.1, it references gravel trails. And the nature of a multi-use trail that if you want the multiplicity of users is it needs to be a hard surface. And I'd like to take out those references from the multi-use trail because there's other trail ratings in the standards that apply to ecologically sensitive areas. But when we're talking about this multi-use trail, we've defined it as a 3.5 meter wide trail. And it's, I just don't think it should be a gravel surface. It needs to be a paved surface. And I think our standards should reflect that. Is there any appetite for that around the Horseshoe?
Senator Penko?
Just the realization or understanding that we, when we had a grant a number of years ago to to pave this section on the trail of Lower Reach Park on River, our scandal would approve it.
And I think my logic on the other side.
So I think, I think it's going to be future councils deciding what that surface will be based on grants, funding, accessibility permits. So so we, we may run into barriers that restrict the ability or limit the ability or prohibit the ability from a hard surface. And that's where we have to work with partners. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of gravel either. But I also don't think having it within the report is going to be a big issue. I mean, I love to see boardwalks, but I don't even mention in the report, but I think it'll be an opportunity for future councils to consider that. So I think this is a guide. So I don't think it's going to be prescriptive as to here's what we can do or can't do. It's going to be future council decisions.
I think it, from my perspective, if we're going to parks as a partner and we've got, this is our standard. This is what we're looking for, and this is why we approved it. It gives us a stronger case to push for those hard surface trails, whether it's a boardwalk or whether it's asphalt or concrete. So that's where, in the idea that this is aspirational, let's make it, let's put a little bit more beat behind it. Let's make it more aspirational, but that's my take. The similar with the permeable pavers, similar to the permeable asphalt, permeable pavers have a lot more maintenance and have a lot more cost to put them in. And I don't see the advantages to this kind of application. So I don't support having that section in there, I think, for this standard construction materials to be good. Through section 3.7 with lighting, there's nothing that references our existing lighting standard that we used in the town square. And I'd like to see that consistent. It also references solar applications. And when we look at the cost of batteries and solar panels and the environmental, like the life cycle analysis of those things compared to a wire, when we need those lights the most is in November and December when it's the darkest, and that's when solar is the least reliable. So I'd like to see the references to that taken out and the references to our existing standards put in, just so it's consistent. And the fourth thing was environmental assessment. Right now it references that we're going to do environmental assessments for trails. And I don't know if there's a policy that implicates that, fine, but I don't think we should be doing EAs for everything because it's, it's a trail. It's not a major infrastructure project. And the last was the same as the winter maintenance point where we've got, what was it, 17 kilometers of trails? I think we've got 64 kilometers of sidewalks. It's a significant increase if we were going to start providing winter service on all those trails. But I think there should be at least a plan of getting that connectivity through Lower Reach Park where we know there's a lot of existing use and it's not safe with the condition when it's been walked on and rained on and iced over. So I'd like to see some kind of winter maintenance in here. And I just think it's a little bit frustrating where when we go with the temporary parking lot last week and we just say, hey, we're going to pave it on a whim, but we're not looking at this big picture of, okay, well, are we going to get more value for our residents by paving or by plowing it on a whim? By plowing that temporary parking lot or plowing a kilometer in Lower Reach Park that connects people from Beckwood Street to Old Slize? So anyway, those are the five things that are still definitely a lot stronger tonight, and I'm glad we've debated it. But those are the things I'm looking to see in it still.
Senator Penko?
Let me just comment on the lighting. And I mean, lighting is, I think it's necessary, certainly through many networks around Lower Reach. I'd love to see it down there sooner or later. I, I wouldn't dismiss the possibility of solar, just recognizing technology is improving all the time. Storage is improving all the time. And from a cost efficiency standpoint, it may make sense to have solar there versus having to run conduit and electrical surfaces all through there if the product that's available can provide suitable coverage even at times of the year when daily light may be limited. So I, I, I think again, it's a future decision for a future council or maybe this council next year. So I would just want to leave it open to the possibilities and have a council decide based on information available at the time. Maybe grants are available at the time as well as to what's suitable. But permeable paving, same argument, I guess, like what's the right surface? And I think the fact that if that is indicated in there or we said not permeable paving, paving.
The permeable paving has been taken out. The permeable pavers are still
Pavers, yeah. Again, I still might say, same mindset, I guess, it's just if it's in there, I don't think it means that we're going to be doing it. It's more matter. There may be areas where that makes sense to incorporate that within. And maybe that's an area where we've got drainage issues. So I, I'm fine leaving things where they are, but that's my own personal feeling.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Brennan?
I support, I support this as well.
Senator Robinson?
I support it as well.
All right.
I just have one comment about the the winter maintenance piece. And so I think if I could, the, the difference between plowing the temporary trailhead or the trailhead over the cat trail versus what we're doing or not doing now is that parks are not open after October 12th or whatever Thanksgiving is. So we don't actually, because we don't do winter maintenance, we're not encouraging people to come out and and use the trails and things. And so if we want to move to that space, that's, which is fine. That's a fundamental shift in terms of our staffing component, and it's a whole different series of risk management that we need to do. And so we're comfortable looking at that, but there's, there's other implications just out, not just on removing the snow. It's significantly broader than that. So the trailhead is supposed to be used year-round. The current trails are not indicated for year-round use at this point in time. Doesn't mean we shouldn't encourage people to get out and be active, but they're just, they're not maintained in the winter. So.
Counselor McKenna?
And I guess with that last comment, Director Clark, our asset management plan would need to change. Sure, the level of service we're offering on those trails would change on the wear and tear. Would change in the life expectancy of maintenance. So it does have, get it. Thank you. All tied to the asset manager plan.
Really is. All comes back to Director Daubert. Anything else?
That's it for this. We'll get back to counsel.
Thank you.
Bringing us to a 10.5 strategic plan progress update with CEO Mars.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy to report that we've made tremendous progress over the last six months. We last reported in December of 2024. So since then, we've, we've moved the needle on several. We've talked about several this evening, the asset management plan, the trails network. So all of these are very active files that we're, we're balancing and moving forward. The report, I think, describes it, so I won't go through the entire report, but I would just like to highlight some of the, some of the bigger ones. Most items are on track or haven't yet started. There are some that are contingent on other projects like the procurement policy, the OP. So once they're in place, we can move to the next phase of those. So a few we have not started purposely. Others are tracking behind active transportation plan. We've, I mean, we've talked about that this evening. Active transportation is on road as well. So Director McMunn's working with his staff. We committed to doing it in-house. There wouldn't be a, an external cost for that. So that will be the focus in autumn and winter months, and we hope to have something early during the winter of 2026 to bring forward to you. Some of the other big ones, Confeder Bridge, we've talked about that extensively. What I can say right now is we're waiting for a permit from Parks Canada. So we're working closely with them to get that permit so we can move forward. We have the rural transit feasibility study, so that's underway. That's a partnership with Lannar County. We had public engagement sessions. We had one in this room a couple of weeks ago. They were reasonably well-attended. The OP, I mentioned that, that's on track. We should have a draft plan for committee and council approval later this year. We have some more public consultation happening later this year, so that's certainly on track. It's a huge project. Heritage Conservation District, we've had a bit of public consultation on that, but it's moving forward again by, well, over the summer. In fact, we should have some more information for you on that one. The one I'd like to spend a little bit of time on is the Centennial Park Farmer's Market. As you know, it launched as an open-air market on the 23rd of May. Seems to be running very well, a great reception, a great selection of vendors. So we want to talk a little bit about direction in that regard. The, the strategic plan specifically states a feasibility study. So we want to get your opinion on whether the existing market checks that box or whether we need to study it further and look at perhaps, is that the best location? Should there be a second or a third location? Those kinds of discussions. So we'd like to get your direction on that. And Mr. Chair, we could talk about that at this point if you wish.
That's something committee is ready to discuss right now. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, yeah, I've been to the the farmer's market two or three times and it's a great location. I'm not, don't recall what, what does a feasibility study entail? Is that a consultant that tells us what we should be doing or?
Through the chair, not necessarily a consultant, but ideally a consultant. I, I think this was written at a time when we didn't have a market, farmer's market, and no prospect for getting one.
Yeah.
So I, I think the question really is, is the one we have, which is privately operated, not necessarily regulated. Farmer's markets can become really complicated or they can remain simple. I think we have a very
Yeah.
simple and effective one, quite frankly. But really, the question is, is it sufficient? Does it check the box? Do we need more than one? And where would it be if we had a second? And would they, you know, so that study would have to look at, would they cannibalize each other? Is that, would it draw more people? Those are the kinds of things we need to look at in the feasibility study. But my suggestion is if if we're happy with what we have, then I don't think a feasibility study is particularly useful at this point.
Okay, through the chair, I tend to agree with that. Just a question, did the farmer's market receive any type of support from the town?
Our MBA person could answer.
So I could speak to that. So we negotiated, we had an open call for applications and then they were the successful opponent. We negotiated a, not a reduced fee, but a reasonable fee instead of paying us every single time to go to the market. We've had an annual fee, and so we have a park lease with them. So they don't receive any funding from us, but there is a relationship that we have, a long-term lease with them for the, for the year. And it's marketed as a pilot project, just to see how it goes.
Okay, that's good. I don't know that we need a feasibility study.
I would agree with canceling feasibility study. Senator Robinson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I, I agree with that. The actual feasibility, feasibility study will be quite evident by the end of the summer season, I think. And as far as getting a, you know, do we need more than one? No, because it's difficult to slot one in with all the farmer's markets that are around the area anyway. So I, I personally think we should just leave it the way it is.
Counselor McKenna?
Great. Yeah, I'm thrilled to see it there. We've been over, and I'm, you got to start and it's got started. I'm thrilled. Whether we call it feasibility study or not, what is the plan for farmer's market? What, what, what do we, what is the definition of success? What will happen over the next three to five years with the location? How will we know that? Where do people use the bathrooms? I'm assuming they're using the public washrooms there. Is it more like, so I, there are some questions on the national site of Farmer's Markets Association. We'll just get you to ask some questions. I wouldn't mind just a little, like, where are we going with it? If it's just going to be pop-up tents, that's fine. They're terrific. But then that's our goal, then, then that's fine. I don't think we've asked ourselves those questions. The growth is going to continue. And if we want to, is it, is it just for local food access or is it a tourism draw or both? Just some questions, because then you design it, support it or shape it. Somebody with their MBA probably could help without going outside the organization, some bright personnel.
CEO Mars?
Yeah, I think all valid questions and defining success is something we should always do. So my suggestion is, because we have a pilot, we'll do a wrap-up of the year and we can, we can address some of those issues at the wrap-up and make a decision on next year and going forward.
Great. Counselor Miller?
I support that. This is another one of these items that have been on the strat plan for two terms. For good reason, we've had a lot of farmer's markets come and go. And so I think an analysis of this pilot is wise because I was at the farmer's market for the first time this week. It's wonderful. Once we have the Confederation Bridge in and people can access it a bit easier, that'll be perfect too. So I'm sure it's perfect, but an analysis to kind of document what makes it perfect so that next season they come back would be ideal.
So is that clear, clear direction?
Thank you.
A few more highlights, the procurement policy. We have a draft staff are reviewing it right now. We hope to have that in front of you in July, August at the latest for, for your consideration. Our existing one is really dated and cumbersome and we want to correct that. Climate Action Plan is progressing. The working group are doing great work developing milestone targets and also developing the plan that will eventually come to committee and council for approval. So that's moving forward beautifully. We did the BRNE study earlier this year, so we have the input from, from committee that we'll take into account and we'll bring that back for final approval. The high-speed rail, as you know, we've, I think, done most of what we can do at this level. It's, it's at the federal government's approval stage. The mayor and I have been talking about some potential advocacy efforts to, to make sure that our desires are not forgotten. And we'll, so we'll keep it top of mind with our friends at the federal level. Trails, we talked about trails extensively just a moment ago. And I think lastly, what we didn't talk specifically about is there are a few disconnected pieces of trails that, that Director Clark and her staff are working on. The Lombard Abbott intersection is one of them. That section that's missing from the pedestrian bridge out to Park Avenue, that's going to be filled in. And some work down by the long shed at Lower Reach. So just a few examples of active connections that we're going to make this year and make sure we have connectivity throughout the whole network. So that's kind of a high level. There are 35 initiatives that are, that are being worked on at various levels, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor McKenna?
Just to say how pleased I am with the progress. And it's not like this is all staff have to do. There's all of them. There's all of the world of municipal world that you have to deliver on beyond the strategic plan. So I know and I appreciate how much work everyone puts into this as well as everything else you have on your plate. And then the surprises, fires or government changes on rules on how we do things. So I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Okay, two questions.
I would like to just in response to that, say thank you and but also just give credit to the directors here in the room. They take on the lion's share of this work while they're running operations. So their effort and the effort of their staff is not lost. It takes a team to make these things happen.
Should have come before that. 1.1 is a really real conservative line because we've got the Beckwood Street redevelopment completed last term. We still have that bike lane that it's really hard to connect to to other places in town. And I'm just wondering, can we expect that lane to connect to other cycling infrastructure before the end of this term of council?
Yes.
And how will that be come forward?
Well, I think we'll address that in the in the Active Transportation Implementation Plan. I mean, that section really saving except for potential changes to the left turn lane going into what was Confederation Drive. There's really no more real estate on the bridge. It's it's without stating the obvious, it's fixed. So my prediction would be a shared use lane along the bridge section. So that's a relatively simple thing. That's pavement markings and signage. So is it achievable? Absolutely. But I think I would just caution that we want to look at that in the full context of the system. Right? We know we need to connect it. That was the plan all along. Am I confident we will? Absolutely. It just may not be a dedicated track or a dedicated lane. It may be a shared use lane. So that's we need to look at the geometry and the width of the road, vertical curves, horizontal curves, and decide what the best application is. But will we have that in the plan? Yes.
And done before 2026?
We'll have it. The projection right now is over the winter, I would say first quarter. I think that's what I stated here in the report, first quarter 2026, we'll have a plan.
And the second one is the 3.5 support and implement the downtown revitalization programs included in CIP. Obviously, big concerns with that from the last round and just looking forward to trying to get that on track before, while this term's still on, because that's been something that's ongoing. So looking forward to working on that in the future, but yeah.
I can say in response to that, that staff in the development services are taking a deep dive into it. I think it was a really good discussion we had here about, I think, looking at the program a little bit differently and becoming more of a gatekeeper approach to make sure that we're hitting all the marks before it comes to this table. So so that was a very good discussion and I can assure you we're following up and will implement changes. Not sure what they are yet, but I think maybe it's a philosophical difference or philosophical approach to how we look at those applications and and becoming perhaps a little more, not rigid, but raising our expectations for what we want to accomplish. And and that goes back to first principles. We have to ask ourselves, why does this program exist? What are we trying to achieve? And that's the lens which through which we'll look through when we when we examine applications in the future. So that'll be brought forward by Mr. Granke, certainly in the third, possibly fourth quarter, but before next year's intake.
Awesome. Counsel Miller?
Yeah, thanks, CEO Morris. It's good to know where we're at and I know we're well underway. We have a year and a half left of this term of council. I guess the question is, as we approach our last budget year together, what what other resources do you need to to complete these goals? And will you bring those forward in the budget process or tell us soon so that we can make sure we provide our hardworking staff with the help they need to get these things accomplished?
Yes, through the chair, that's a really good question. I can't give you a definitive answer today. So as a management group, we look at these and then project what resources we'll need. But we'll certainly know before the budget process begins. In fact, we'll start preparing the budget under Mr. Dauber's guidance in September. So we'll look at each of the remaining projects and make a determination of what resources. But for the most part, a lot of this is, other than the big ones, the OP and the Heritage Conservation District, which were already underway. Most of the remaining ones, I would say generally fall within the purview of staff resources internally. So but but if we need outside resources, we'll certainly address that in the budget.
Thank you.
Any final questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much, CEO Morris. And our last item is committee appointment with Clerk Castell.
Thank you. Just to advise counsel that we have received an application from Danielle Schufelt to sit on the Climate Action Working Group. This application has been vetted through staff and a recommendation to formally appoint her. Would like to be brought forward July 7th if counsel concurs.
Same thumbs up. Seeing no committee board and external organization updates. We've got two correspondence items. The first is regarding Bill Six, Safer Municipalities Act from the city of Peterborough. Does anybody have any questions, comments on that one? Counsel McKenna, no. The second is Bill Five, Protect Ontario by Leashing our Economy Act from the township of British Pitelago. Any questions, comments on that one?
I don't have a specific recommendation, but I think we should all be concerned about the Species at Risk Act and the dilution of the act. I haven't seen the replacement. I forget the term they're calling it. But I I would suggest that counsel should probably go on record as asking for a review of the intent of those changes.
So maybe direct staff to come back with a recommendation for our own response?
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds good. But nothing but Bill Six were good.
Bill Six, you know, it's, it seems that the the intent there is to better define shelter capacity. And so if if there's a displacement of people from a public park, I think it's just clarifying the definition of shelter capacity. Thankfully, it hasn't been an issue in Smiths Falls. Director Clark had brought forward a protocol for dealing with it. So I think we're in good shape here locally. So I I don't think you need to take action on that one.
Great. So we'll get direction on the 12.2. And seeing no further comments, questions, we will go to adjournment. With Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Brennan. The proceeding is adjourned at 6:59 PM. Stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting. All in favor? Alright, that's carried. So we'll take a quick break before our council meeting.
I did.
I see we're good. Welcome back. This meeting is special meeting of Smiths Falls Town Council Monday, June 23, 2025. On June 23, 2025, we acknowledge that the sacred land which Smiths Falls has been located has been the site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. Land is the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Gomwun Anishinaabe Nation. We're grateful to the Gomwun ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We're also grateful to the Gomwun people for their contribution to making of the Rio Canal which runs through Smiths Falls. We're mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all the relations. Together, may we care of this land and each other. Drawing on the strength of our mutualistic nation building, our peace and friendship, be mindful of generations to come. I will call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Motion for approval, the agenda is with Counselor Quinn, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Robinson that the June 23, 2025 special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Quinn, seconded by Counsel Robinson. The June 23, 2025 special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated. All in favor? Carried. Looking for declaration, disclosure of kinder interest or conflict of interest in general nature thereof? I see none. We have no minutes. Any reports or updates? I assume Counsel Maguire?
I had the pleasure of attending the Ontario Heritage Conference this past week and there was three main themes. The first was heritage and economic development. It was really inspiring to see how in Prince Edward County, they've been able to leverage their heritage as one of the best examples of an economic driver in Ontario. The second was heritage as an ecological preservation tool through natural heritage landscapes that are are being restricted through provincial policies and through architectural features too. So in Prince Edward County, there's a lot of chimney swifts and the chimney swifts will only nest in heritage chimneys. And a lot of heritage chimneys get removed or capped and then the swifts can't come in. So they they've got a whole team that will monitor the chimneys and monitor the swifts. And it was a really interesting study in in the ecological aspect of something that you don't always think. And then there was also some great examples from the GTA area of organizations that are repurposing buildings and they were doing really good calculations on the carbon capture from reusing that existing concrete instead of putting it into the landfill. And the number on the case study that was presented was it would have taken 200 years for that building, if they had torn it down and built a new one, to replace the carbon that they would have put into the landfill from the demolition. So and they were able to do the renovations at a fraction of the cost of building new. Drawing up, I think I've combined the two of them. The affordable housing, heritage and affordable housing was the third one where there's, they had all kinds of examples of heritage buildings that have been repurposed into affordable housing units through community programs and through partnerships with the federal government. So it was exciting to see some success stories and and all the benefits of this reuse happening and then being able to visit a place where they're putting it into action and making a lot of money off it. So I appreciate the municipality sending me to that and have plenty to talk about if anybody wants to hear more.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Counsel McKenna?
Well, seeing Counsel Maguire talk about a provincial conference, I attended the Public Health of Ontario Conference last week as well. I'll just say it was a good conference. The keynote speaker, Mark Fergette, talked about attending powwow in Smiths Falls or in Toronto. And he talked about it as an example of reconciliating action and encourages us all to revisit the 94 calls to action. And he gave us an update on which ones are moving forward, which ones are stalled and which ones have been completed. And he noted that there were some of them that apply at the municipal level. And I'll have to refresh myself to see if we're working on that locally. But it was fun to go to Toronto and hear about a powwow in Smiths Falls, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any further reports or updates? No? We have no presentations or proclamations, no consent agenda. We have one motion tonight with Counsel Brennan.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Miller. Whereas bylaw 8982, 2017 adopted a policy respecting naming of municipal facilities and assets. And whereas an application was received to rename the seniors activity building at 61 Cornelia Street West to incorporate the name of their former president, Mr. John Bud Fawcett. And whereas the Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls has deemed it appropriate to rename the seniors activity building as a tribute to Mr. Fawcett to honor his years of dedication and numerous contributions to the seniors activity building. Now be resolved that the Council of Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls officially renames the seniors activity building as Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Activity Center.
Further discussion, Counsel Brennan?
Well, it's an honor. Bud was a friend and a neighbor and I'm really happy we could do this for him. And I know his family are touched and honored. And I can tell you firsthand that Mr. Fawcett was at that building at least 50 hours a week because I live beside him. So it's very fitting that we're doing this in June, which is seniors month. And I know that anybody that I've talked to about this just thinks it's a great thing for the town to do. So it's a big win. And a big loss.
Yes. Thank you very much. And and yesterday, Counsel Brennan and I were part of the Evergreen Avenue Celebration where our memorial stone was placed for Mr. Fawcett as well. So nice to see back to back recognition. His family was there, his granddaughter Connor spoke so well about her fondness and his accomplishments. So a very fitting tribute. Anything further? If not, I'll read the question. Moved by Counsel Brennan, seconded by Counselor Miller. Whereas bylaw 8982-2017 adopted a policy respecting naming of municipal facilities and assets. Whereas an application was received to rename the seniors activity building, 61 Cornelia Street West, to incorporate the name of their former president, Mr. John Bud Fawcett. Whereas Council Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls has deemed appropriate to rename the seniors activity building as a tribute to Mr. Fawcett to honor his years of dedication and numerous contributions to the seniors activity building. Now therefore be resolved, the Council of Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls officially renames the seniors senior's activity building as Bud Fawcett Memorial Senior Activity Center. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, we have no bylaws. I assume no further inquiry, further inquiries or announcements, no confirmatory bylaw. And adjournment, of course, is with Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brennan. This council adjourned its proceedings at 7:08 PM and stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting of council.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counselor Brennan. This council adjourns proceedings at 7:08 PM and stands so adjourned until the next duly called meeting of council. All in favor? That's carried. Have a good night, everyone.